Good morning, everybody. My name is Anthony Coghill, City Council Representative for the 4th District. Today, we have with us the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure, and Kim Lucas and Nick Ross are with us. And before we begin, we are joined by Councilwoman Erica Strasburger. I'm sure some others will be joining us. I don't see anybody online just yet, though. With that, I will turn it over to Mike Strellick, our Budget Director, and he can give us a brief overview, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Councilman. So today's public hearing is the last. Thank you all for your continued...
Oh, is it?
The Department of Mobility and Infrastructure is today. The mission for DOMI is to provide the physical mobility necessary to enable the social and economic mobility. The people of Pittsburgh through the management, design, improvement, and operation of the public rights away. And at risk of stepping on your later presentation, DOMI is responsible for over 1,000 linear miles of streets, 2,400 lane miles of streets, 675 sets of steps, 44,000 street lighting fixtures, 660 signalized intersections, 850 street signs, and 33 miles of guardrail. To their budget information, their total budget this year is $9,173,000. That's an increase of about 11%. They have 100 staffers within their department. Budgetarily, it's an increase of 2. But I think it might actually be a decrease throughout the whole city, right? Because they have two people being transferred in from DPW, Survey Party Chief and the Land Rod Specialist. They also have a position transferring from grants to the operating budget because the grant has expired. So you may have an increase of 2, or you may have a decrease of 1 from, like, a senior planner. They also have changes in non-salaries. Total increase of about $225,000 in the non-salary subclasses. The largest one is from computer maintenance being increased by $214,000. That's for Cyclomedia Technology, which is a budget increase. Council already approved that contract, I believe. They have a number of capital projects. I'm not going to go through all of them because they have $83 million worth of capital projects, including bridges, streets, landslides. Largest one of note, of course, is street resurfacing, budgeted for $17.6 million this year. They also collect revenues because they are the cities in charge of the city's rights away. About $2.5 million will flow into the city through their department this year. That's all the budget numbers I have, but I believe they have a presentation for council.
Sure. And excuse me, Kim, but before we do that, I just wanted to inform you, I have to be somewhere at 10:30. I see Councilwoman Strasburger's here, and she's going to jump in and, you know, take the helm. But I just wanted to say a couple of things before you go because I'm afraid I'd have to leave before you're finished, okay? So first and foremost, Kim, you know, you won me over, okay? When we had a situation up in Brookline where, you know, we came out, we painted all the lines yellow, you know, no parking lines, right? However, the one line we painted was in a loading zone. And, you know, so people were afraid to park there. You know, they could, they're restricted, of course, 2 days a week, or I can't remember exactly the timeframe. But I will tell you, Kim came out, we analyzed the situation, painted the curb a different color, and it just made all the difference in the world. So, you know, just a little thing like that really went a long way. The other thing is, I want to tell you, I'm putting in for a policy analyst for you. I know you only have one. So, you know, when we go crunch the numbers before next week, you know, we hope to get that position filled. It's a revenue-neutral situation, so we're not asking for money from, you know, different pots. So with that, I just wanted to say that, and I'll let you go, and then Erica will come join, you know, and take over the helm here. And sorry for the interruption. I just had to say those couple of things. Thanks for the work you do. I really was really confident in you after that situation.
Okay, thank you for the kind words, and could not have done that without the team, who I would like to start with an introduction of.
Good.
Because I was not out there painting curbs personally. We can't do any of this work without every single person that we're going to discuss today. So, as you've heard, my name is Kim Lucas. I am the Acting Director right now for the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure. My day job, as I joke, is as the Assistant Director for the department where I oversee the planning, policy, and permitting functions for DOMI.
I am Jeff Scalik, and I'm the Deputy Director for the Department.
I'm Evan Gross, the Fiscal and Contracting Supervisor.
Nick Ross, Municipal Traffic Engineer and Traffic Bureau Chief.
And Eric Settler, Chief Engineer.
Evan, did you say you're Evan Gross? Oh, well, that just reminds me, we're joined by Councilwoman Gross as we speak, so let that be known for the record. So, thanks. And Kim, did you want to give us a brief overview? Did you want to do a presentation, or did you just want to open up for questions?
I wanted to go through, and I'll go pretty quickly because a lot of this is information that I hope that folks are familiar with. But as we are one of the newer departments in the city still, I wanted to make sure that anybody watching today had an opportunity to learn a little bit more about what we do. So, as you've heard, we're the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure. So, right now, you've heard that we have about 100 staff members, and they are divided into 3 bureaus. My bureau chiefs, including myself, introduced ourselves this morning, and our administrative staff. This organization chart, I've always heard, as soon as you see an org chart, it's probably out of date because things move so quickly in most city departments. But the numbers here represent not only city-funded positions, but grant-funded positions and contract positions as well because we couldn't do the work we do without leveraging all of those additional resources. Our goal, as we've already established, is to provide the physical mobility to promote and sustain the economic and social mobility of the residents of the city of Pittsburgh. Our number-one goal is that nobody should die or be seriously injured using our roadways, regardless of how you are choosing to get from point A to point B, whether that's driving, whether that's walking or rolling. We want you to be safe. We want that trip to be not only safe and accessible, but enjoyable. We want short trips to be easily achieved without a private automobile, and we want you to be able to get to your basic needs without a private automobile. And we want our transportation system to be affordable, and that means improving access to affordable modes, such as biking and walking and public transportation. And finally, we want our streets to reflect the pride of our city. We want them to be attractive and welcoming places for our diverse community. So, in terms of the assets that our department maintains, I don't know of any other department that, as soon as you step foot into the city of Pittsburgh, you are consuming our resources. If you, even if you don't leave your home, and someone is bringing goods and services to your home, that person is using our city streets. They're using our sidewalks. They're using our traffic signals. And in our city today, we're maintaining over 1,000 miles of city streets. So, as I go through a few of these numbers, keep in mind, we have about 100 people working for DOMI, and we're maintaining over 1,000 miles of city streets. Tens of thousands of crosswalks and pavement markings are on those miles, and those need to be maintained on a regular basis. It's not one of those things where you install it and it lasts forever. We have over 600 signalized intersections, over 40,000 streetlights. And you'll hear a little bit more later about some improvements we have to our streetlight program. And today, we have around 1,000 bike racks, and substantially increasing the number of bike racks is something we were able to do this year that I'm not quite sure the last time we were able to do as successfully. In terms of safety, I want to start because our goal, our number-one goal, is safety on our streets. And when you look at the data, the preliminary data from PennDOT, you will see that from 2019 to 2020, the total number of crashes has decreased in the city of Pittsburgh. In 2021, the year is not done yet, but I'm hopeful that we're still on that trend. Of course, crashes are influenced by changes in commute patterns due to the pandemic, et cetera. However, I'd like to think that we are, as a department, being successful by increasing access to safe infrastructure like sidewalks, better cycling infrastructure, and improved signal timing that we have impacted, and we are achieving our goal of increasing safety in our city. So, I will go quickly through a few of these items, but this presentation will be available online for anybody that wants to refer to it later. So, in 2021, we were able to resurface 57 miles of street. That's a 20% increase from what we were able to do in 2020, where we had 46 miles of streets that we resurfaced. We painted 300 miles of center line and 3,600 crosswalks, and we had a process improvement in Nick Ross's shop, thanks to Nick, where we increased the skillset and capability of our staff in-house so that we can do some of that high-vis thermoplastic work using our in-house crews. What that means is a better rapid response time because we're not relying on contractors for as much of our work, and a cost savings that directly, in turns, increases the amount of safety improvements that we're able to make. In addition, we decrease the amount of time it takes to respond to those 3-1-1 requests that we receive from citizens every single day. I know that we're receiving thousands of those, and we're finding process improvements, again, to make sure that our response time and improvements are as efficient and quickly achieved as possible. And a number of our improvements, you know, it's easy to see when a brand-new bridge is built, which we are pursuing right now, but there are somewhat invisible improvements that we've made that I want to draw attention to, like improved signal timing. Last year, I believe the number of signal timing improvements that we made was around 40, so we've doubled it. What this means is better crossings for pedestrians. It means more efficient operations for everybody on our roadways. There's a few photos of some of that great work. You can see that we filled in critical sidewalk gaps. We reinforced retaining walls, and we've been able to do the beautiful and complicated work sometimes of brick-street repairs and brick-and-blockstone crossings as well. In terms of maintenance and operations, we've performed major maintenance on 5 bridges and advanced design for 6 additional bridges. We've mitigated landslides at 11 locations. Landslides are one of those things that you know are probably going to happen, but you can't know exactly how many and to what scale and scope of improvements are required. And so, having a nimble team and having the resources in place to be able to quickly respond to some of those repairs is absolutely critical for the safety and operation of our city. And at the bottom here, you can see that we've approved payment on all projects of over $46 million. So, sometimes there's a little confusion with our budget where you may see a project and a line item in a 2021 budget, but you don't necessarily see that that project gets completed in 1 year. It's because of the nature of the work we do. But this is to demonstrate that we are performing millions and millions of dollars of work every year, and that number is only going to increase with the federal opportunities that are opening themselves right now. There are some additional photos of some of the great infrastructure work that we've been able to achieve. As you can see here, on Ead Street, we were able to reinforce the road and improve drainage, et cetera, and improving accessibility through slope stabilization projects. In terms of planning, and I see that the presentation is a little delayed, but the next slide, you'll see, there we go, is that in 2021, the city released its 50-year vision plan. Now, we don't know exactly what our needs are going to be in 50 years. We don't know exactly what transportation technologies are going to be here, but what we have is a blueprint for how to address those changes and how to be strategic with making decisions in the next 50 years, whether it be connecting neighborhoods or all the way up to the global connections between Pittsburgh and the rest of the world. Our Strip District Mobility Plan, which has long awaited to address the needs, the changing needs, and preserve the history of one of our most attractive destinations within the city, is live right now for public comments. I invite folks to take a look online. There are other ongoing neighborhood planning efforts, including in Homewood, an Active Mobility Plan, in Oakland, and Greater Hill District Master Plan, where we're collaborating with other departments, like the Department of City Planning, to have a comprehensive look at the city and the mobility needs, again, to increase safety and increase economic and social mobility of our residents. And safety, so one of the top discussed and top billed programs that our department offers is traffic calming. You know, I think most residents today would tell you that they would like to feel safer on their streets. You can see here, we've received around 250 applications this year alone for traffic calming. That means someone has reached out to us and said, "I don't feel safe walking on my street, driving on my street." We've been able to go out and collect data at almost 200 of those sites, and we've been able to implement 13 projects this year alone. And we have goals for next year that I'll go into later about how we want to divide and conquer even more some of these requests. We successfully implemented our first raised crosswalk within the city. This took not only innovation and vision on behalf of Nick and other teams within our department, but also took collaboration with OMB and other departments so that we could actually procure this service. When you're doing something for the first time, especially a safety improvement, sometimes that means that you have to change your contracts and the way you've done work. And despite that hurdle, we were able to achieve it, and I thank the team for that. And Safe Routes to School, you heard last year that Safe Routes to School, this was the first year that we'd ever had a Safe Routes to School Coordinator and Program within the city. Last year, we worked with 4 schools to identify safety improvements, and this year, we've been able to design those safety improvements. And we've also done more outreach and had our very first Safe Routes to School Walk to School Day, where we awarded the Golden Sneaker Award to Pittsburgh-Dillworth for having the highest number of students walking to school. How great is that? You know, when we have our most vulnerable residents, such as children and elder individuals that feel safe and confident getting where they need to go by foot, then we know that everybody can go back to the real. Complete Streets, so our Move Forward campaign is coming to a conclusion at the end of this year, but that doesn't mean we're going to stop trying to improve our streets through bike and other connections. This year, we were able to complete 10 miles of all ages and ability bike improvements. And for 2022, we're going to be able to get out of the gate right away with some designs that will have been completed this year for additional improvements. 3 major projects, as you can see here, including the Trolley Trail, which I know is one that's been around for quite some time in the city. We have a public meeting in just a week's time to bring some designs and ideas back to the community. We have made substantial progress on that project. The Davis Avenue Pedestrian and Bicycle Bridge, as you can see here, a rendering of, is another great project where we're improving connections, and we're making it safer for individuals to get around our city. There are some additional pictures of projects that we've completed this year, including the Hatfield Connector, which is the photo on the left, the demonstration of how DOMI worked with DPW to complete a substantial bike improvement and pedestrian improvement with using in-house crews. And so, we were able to be nimble and successful in that very well-received project.
Kim, I'm sorry. May I interrupt just for a second? I'm sorry. And, you know, I'm really sorry I have to leave the meeting. Councilwoman Strasburger is going to fill in now, but I just wanted to say 2 things. Nick, what we did up on Pioneer is fantastic. The people are thrilled with what we did. It used to be speed humps were a bad thing. Now, I get requests all over the city. So, I'd love to see that continue. Love to see that better funded, more funding for that. As far as paving roads go, let's pave them all. Honestly, so until my district's all paved, I'll continue pushing that. But again, I apologize, have to step up, step out because I rely heavily on DOMI and Public Works, but hopefully I get finished and I get back in time. And Ms. Strasburger, if you would please.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Shall I continue?
Please do.
So, we hear a lot about traffic calming and about the individual speed humps and curbs because that is what people engage with every single day. But we do things on a scale from the individual curb and speed hump all the way to mega projects, like the I-579 CAT project that we collaborated with external organizations to achieve. The West Ohio Street Bridge, which is open, had been closed for multiple years. And you might have noticed that Serpentine Drive is open again after having been closed due to landslide activity for multiple years. And so, we are working on such a grand scale, and we hope to have successes continued on all of those scales. I wanted to share an image of that amazing park conversion where we've improved the use of that space. And examples of these bridges that have now been reopened to automobile traffic and improve pedestrian connections on our north side and elsewhere. Here's a great image of our Vista Street steps. I want to highlight here that we have what we call a bicycle runel, which is that yellow component on the Vista Street steps. That makes it easier for someone with a bicycle to be able to go up those steps. That was achieved after hearing a lot of responses from the community when maybe there was a design proposed without it. It was absolutely critical to improve accessibility and for that connection. On the right, you see Rialto Street, another substantial step rehabilitation project. In terms of public space and right-of-way management, I wanted to share some of what I consider to be very impressive numbers and perhaps the highest that we've ever achieved as a department and city. This year alone, we, to date, have issued more than 18,000 permits in our public space. And so, that's for utility companies. That's for individual property owners. And we've performed more than 50,000 inspections for permits and in response to 3-1-1 requests that we have received. You heard at the beginning that we have about $2 million in projected revenue. We had around $2 million in projected revenue for this year, but we collected more than double of what the projected revenue was in terms of permits. And that revenue represents and reflects the amount of work that we are achieving in terms of the number of permits that we are issuing and subsequent inspections. We've also had wins this year in revising city code to streamline encroachments. That means if you're coming to the city and you've got something minor, like a planner box, you don't have to get city council approval anymore just to beautify the public space in those light-touch ways. That not only is going to have our staff free up their time and council members for probably more critical issues, it's going to make a better customer service experience, and ultimately, that is what we are here for. And in terms of outdoor dining and retail, we had over 100 commercial streeterries and sidewalk cafes that were stood up between last year and this year in response to the pandemic crisis. And we are working right now in 2022 to formalize a more permanent program because we've had a lot of positive feedback on the conversion of that public space for these purposes, and we want to make them safer and even more beautiful. There's some images of a few of those outdoor activations that we have today. And bus shelters and streetlights. I want to touch on something that often blends into the background, but has such a huge impact on how people feel when they're using our public space. Last year, we came to this budget hearing and announced that we had executed our contract for a bus shelter advertising contract. And since that time, we've been able to refurbish and improve 28 existing shelters and install 15 new shelters. We've received almost $100,000 in ad revenue from those bus shelters alone. And when we make public transit more accessible and more attractive, we encourage more people to use it, and we're providing the respect and investment in a resource that so many rely on. In addition, with our streetlight program, we've responded to nearly 1,500 maintenance requests via 3-1-1, and we've installed new lights and artistic lighting on steps and in commercial districts. I know there's a little bit of lag on the presentation, but here's an image of the artistic lighting that we were able to install on the 18th Street steps and a light from Walnut Street improvements. They look a little different today, huh? And a lot of what we talk about are the nuts and bolts of our basic operations, but I didn't want to miss the opportunity to share some of the innovation and progressive things that the city of Pittsburgh has gotten us on the map. We have a pilot program right now with personal delivery devices, as you can see in the photo here, with a company called KiwiBot. These are little robots that will deliver not only things like food, but also library books and necessities from a local drugstore. And so, what we're doing is testing out not only the technology, but in ways to communicate with the public in certain communities to find out how these can help people live better lives. We are still maintaining a leadership position in autonomous vehicle testing. We have a number of companies that have chosen Pittsburgh for its amazing residents who are contributing to the industry and being a great city to work with in terms of being able to demonstrate their technology. And we are in the process of pursuing implementation of a smart loading zone pilot to have our curbs operate a little bit better and also identify a way to perhaps increase revenue while making our curbs more accessible for loading activity. I would be remiss if I did not mention that this year, we launched our MovePGH program. This is our mobility-as-a-service program that brought together a number of mobility services, Port Authority Transit Service, SPIN, electric scooters, Healthy Ride Bike Share, all into one physical location in our mobility hubs and also into an app. Well, you can see here that I know that there are some mixed opinions on scooters, but we've had almost 400,000 trips on about 1,000 scooters. Well, we like to think that that's almost 400,000 times that someone got where they needed to go quickly and safely, and also, maybe they chose to leave their car at home that day, which meant that congestion on our streets and our air quality had been improved and parking spots freed up. We've installed 20 mobility hub citywide, which are revenue-generating because we have advertising on some of them, and scooter corrals. As you can see in the bottom picture, that's an informal scooter corral to make sure that the scooters are as frequently as possible parked safely and in appropriate locations. We have also launched 7 access zones. We may be the first city in the United States that has access zones where, in certain communities that rank highly on equity variables, such as lower incomes and lower access to things like public transportation and car ownership, you automatically get a discount just by running a scooter. You don't have to sign up for a program. By being in a geographic location that we've identified using a data-driven approach, you get a discount. And finally, and I know that I've been chatting for a bit, so I'll go pretty quickly here. I wanted to talk a bit about our goals for 2022. This is an image from our 2070 Vision Plan. I invite everyone to take a look at it. It's on our website that talks about the future. But right now, I'm going to talk about 2022 and not 2070. So, in our capital budget, you will see today that there are 57 unique projects proposed, and that the majority of the bond funding that is proposed is tied to our paving program. In terms of the additional funding, we actually receive more match funding from external sources than we have allocated from local sources. What that means is we're leveraging local dollars to get external dollars, make our work go farther without coming out of the pockets of our residents and businesses. And a few of our major bond projects that you will surely hear about are Bus Rapid Transit, multi-year project that we've been in the process of advancing now, the LED streetlight upgrade, and the Mount Washington KEMA project for slope stabilization. As you'll see here, we have a number of goals that are, some of which are divided by district. We want to have at least 2 traffic calming projects per district. You heard me earlier say that we achieved 13 traffic calming projects in 2021. So, in 2022, we will increase that number and distribute them citywide. We want to have 3 intersection safety improvements per district and a minimum of 6 paint and bollard conversion projects. That means where we've used the quicker-to-implement materials, like paint and flexible posts, that we're going to actually make them into more permanent structures, more attractive structures using concrete. We have a number of traffic signal improvement projects, which not only will make it safer, regardless of what mode you're using on our streets, but will hopefully make our city a little bit more efficient as well as we work towards our physical traffic management center in 412 Boulevard of the Allies building next year. And we're going to continue implementing our Bike Plus Plan, improving pedestrian and bicycle connections citywide. In terms of access and reliability, we're continuing our work for critical sidewalk gap improvements, more connectivity. I've shared an image earlier of the Davis Avenue Bridge for pedestrians and bicycles to improve crossings. And again, signal enhancement projects, Bus Rapid Transit, and more Healthy Ride Bike Share and mobility hub deployments. For adaptability and resiliency, we are continuing on our Smart Spine Signal Project. So, again, traffic signals are one of those things that people don't really think twice about, but what they do think twice about is, "Man, I'm waiting for a long time at this light,"[1671.36] And it doesn't make sense. Being able to be more efficient and innovative with looking at how our signals are timed and being able to control them from one desk will help us identify places for improvement and especially will help us respond in emergency situations and other atypical situations. Our autonomous vehicle policy is continuing to develop and we will have an annual report soon for that. And we're collaborating as always with our external partners such as PWSA on green infrastructure programs. Resurfacing, where would we be without street resurfacing? We're going to continue to do as many roads as possible in the most efficient way as possible. Signal improvements downtown, flood mitigation, steps projects and slope stabilization. Those are some of our core functions and in 2022, we are going to do hopefully more and even smarter. And customer service, so finally, we are here as a customer service oriented department. We're going to improve our public engagement. We've hired a new planner who's going to be focused on improving our public engagement practices because we want Domi to be a household name. And yes, this is a new slide for my team that you didn't know was in here. But we want to know, we want people to know about Domi. Right now, a lot of our interactions are project specific and people don't realize that we're responsible for so many things that they use every single day. That's our goal for 2022 is to make sure that our department is associated with the great work that we are achieving. We want to increase transparency in our policies and procedures. Not only do we want to make sure that our timeframes for things like responses to 311 requests are as short and efficient as possible, we want to make sure that you, the public, know what those timeframes are so that you know what to expect when you contact our city. And we also want to increase the reporting and performance management for functions across the board. And continuing on the theme of organizational change, you can't do those things. You can't improve your customer service without making sure that you're a great place to work and that you've got employees that are happy and that are, that want to stay here. Because when we lose staff, we have to train people, we lose momentum, and we want to be one of the best departments, if not the best, for people to come to. We're here to answer questions.
Thank you, Acting Director. And just for anyone who's just tuning in now, I'm Erica Strasburger. I am filling in as interim chair for Councilman Coghill while he steps away for a minute and hopefully will be back soon. Before I turn it over to Councilwoman Gross, who I know is joining online, I just wanted to allow Council President Kale Smith to say a few words.
Thank you, thank you. I'm going, I'm actually leaving, but I want to thank you all for your work. I think you've stepped up when we needed you the most. So I just want to thank you all for the work that you're doing. And I will be in touch with you through some projects I would like to discuss with you a little bit further. Mount Washington Projects, the trolley trail is going great, thank you for that. And I would like to discuss Warriors Road with you. So if I forget about them, maybe you'll remember those things I would like to discuss. Thank you, everyone, for your work.
Thank you, Council President. And I see Councilwoman Gross, I'll turn it over to her for any questions that she has.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, everyone from Domi for being here today and for that very comprehensive presentation. You really do have a lot on your plate. It looks to, am I freezing a little bit? It looks to me like my feet is a little choppy.
We can hear you just fine and you are not freezing on our end.
Okay, I'm home today with a kid who just got his second vaccination and I suspect he may be online somewhere else in the house. I have Wi-Fi broadband. So I want to guess clarify a few things that I heard in the presentation. And first of all, it may not be a question you know off the top of your head, but I still want to see if we can get an answer. And it's about the paving budget. So it's, I think you reported $17.6 million, but it was a little choppy on my end too, so I wanted to check. And the reason I'm asking is that when I first came to council eight years ago, we had, the city had not been paving at a maintenance level for many years. And more than, you know, 500 miles of road of the thousand miles of road in the city were nearly disintegrating, right? So that was the, those were the budget reports that we would get when we sat here in the December budget meetings. And so we've had nearly $20 million of paving budget for several years now. In addition, the authorities, especially PWSA with its replacement capital projects like water mains and lead water service lines has also had a significant amount of street reconstruction budget, sometimes larger than ours, I think. So I'm wondering if we now know of the thousand miles of road, how many of them have been resurfaced in the last 10 years, which is the cycle? Director Gable used to say we have 1,000 miles of road and that each mile needs to be replaced every 10 years. So we should be doing 100 miles a year if we want perfect streets. So do you have any numbers around how far along we are towards a maintenance schedule?
Fortunately, off the top of my head, I do not. I know we are tracking that information and we use the history of paving to help inform each year's paving list in addition to other variables like collaboration potential with our utilities. Eric, I'm not sure if you by chance have any.
No, thank you. I don't have the exact numbers off the top of my head, but we will get those back to you after the meeting today. You know, I do think that we've made a lot of great progress over the last several years, but I do think there's more to be done, as you mentioned, to make sure that we're investing enough to stay on a cycle that, you know, gets the roads where we want them to be. So a lot of progress has been made, but more to do still.
Well, I'm going to throw in, I'm really eager, thank you for following up and sending us that information. I'm really eager to see it. One of the things though, that I'm going to throw in that says a high concept is that we do have a significant number of miles of street per capita. It's very high. And so we are also at the same time looking for many traffic calming projects. We have, I have tons of requests all the time for traffic calming. And it's something I've said before, so it's not just out of the blue, but if we had fewer miles of street or even narrower lanes or fewer lanes in those miles, we would have less road surface that is under a high maintenance schedule, right? So if you take trucks off a street, that streets can last longer. If you take trucks and cars off a street or off a lane, that pavement is going to last a lot longer. There's probably some metric for that. Mr. Ross, do you know kind of what a rule of thumb is for the weight load on a street or the frequency of, you know, demand on a street versus how long it lasts?
Weight and wear relationship is exponential to the point that a bicyclist or a lightly vehicle effectively doesn't cause any real damage more so than oxidation and weathering. When you get to trucks, buses, that increases exponentially. So we're in a position where it's basically just at the will, the mercy of weather versus exponentially quicker degradation when we do have those trucks.
So I'll say something like a lightly traveled residential street or an alley, if we were to restrict it to vehicles, either half of the width or the entire length, it would at least last twice as long. I'm just going to make that up.
We do, and to that end, a lot of our road diet projects where we generally take a four-lane street and narrow it down to a two-lane street, we are seeing in practice that we do not then go back and repave the entire street, which with each cycle, we would only do the most used pieces. And that has been able to extend that paving budget into further streets that need it.
Great, great. So I just wanted to kind of get that into the conversation so that those people who may not understand or, you know, aren't as amenable to the road diet projects or to the traffic calming projects, maybe we can just appeal to their pocketbooks. And so that just that they know that that street's now actually costing us less money. And then there's more money to go into the high-demand streets that really need almost constant resurfacing. And we certainly have some of those. So thank you for that. I also want to call out something I was really happy to see, which is that I saw in the presentation that we, I think, Mr. Ross, also you trained crews in-house for some of the high-visibility street markings. And I just want to say how enthusiastic I am to see that. Could you speak maybe a little bit more to that? Like, how many people was it, were those new positions? And, and what is the increase in capacity for doing the street markings that we saw because of taking it away from a subcontractor and bringing it in-house to our own employees?
So we have not increased manpower capacity whatsoever through that process. However, several years ago, we purchased our first thermoplastic machine. It has admittedly taken a few years to get staff that has been trained and operating for 30-plus years with just waterborne paint onboard. But we were able to find some time at the end of our program this year to really focus them, provide some training opportunities and at the, quite frankly, at the request of council in the mayor's office, really kind of lean on them to be a bit more open-minded to taking on work that we know that they were capable of doing. And so I believe we were able to get to about a dozen cross, sorry, a dozen intersections. So generally four-leg intersections over about October period of this year. And we're going to be able to expand that quite a bit more heading into next year. Additionally, if I may add, we have taken on further process improvement in bringing back the flex post installation in-house as well. So now we're using more durable flex posts that will last longer and require less replacements. And instead of using our RoadSafe contractor to install those, we are getting our staff trained up this winter in that ability as well. So that'll save us, we pay about $750 for every set of five flex posts that get installed by RoadSafe. We'll be able to take that in-house now and do it at cost heading into the future.
I would like to hear that number a little bit better. So the flex post by subcontractor was what and is going down to what?
So the way our flex post contract is set up, we, they go in pairs of five. So for every five flex posts, we are charged about $750 for procurement of the material and installation. That also comes with a minimum of one day of traffic control we get billed every time we send our contractor out to do that work. The majority of the work that we do use flex posts on are safety projects that sort of daylight intersections, right? And make crosswalks safer and intersections safer to cross. Those don't typically require a full day's worth of work. So we found that we were, we could save considerable amount of money over the course of a year by having our in-house sign and paint crews take that installation when it fits within the schedule. They are still responsible for all that street paving, sorry, street marking and sign maintenance that they were before. But we were able to save, you know, tens of thousands of dollars by having them do the flex post work as well.
Well, congratulations and thank you so much for doing that and to the crews as well. That makes so much sense and I'm really happy to see it. I can think of, I could pull up from emails many examples, but I know that it's always a source of stress when we want a project in a neighborhood. Neighbors are asking us for something around this intersection near their, you know, where they work or live. And then we tell them we're going to do it and then we get the funding for it. But then there's still this extra lag of when it's going to be scheduled. And much of that consternation is because of the subcontracting process. And so it's so much more flexible and has a cost savings to take some of these in-house. So I'm really very excited to see that. Thank you so much. I'm full of envy over the Darlington raised crosswalk. Congratulations to the people around Darlington Road. I loved that picture. Did I also see some like wonky side striping?
That's correct, ma'am. In our traffic calming program, we are always looking for opportunities to provide those benefits to our residents through as low-cost interventions as possible. The sort of the zigzag pavement markings are a strategy that is used abroad quite frequently. We decided to trial them out for the first time in the city on Darlington. We did find limited response from drivers in overall speed. However, it did appear that the pavement markings did affect their ability to sort of draw more attention to the roadway. And when folks are focused on the roadway, they're also focused on everybody else within the roadway. We then, when we realized that that did not accomplish necessarily the speed reduction goals we were set out to accomplish, that's when we came back and put together the plan for that raised crosswalk. This is one that we hadn't yet been able to do within our internal traffic calming program. And so we were able to leverage those same resources, similar projects that we've done in the past, but to do it in this style at a crosswalk. And we first of all appreciate the positive feedback. We've heard that as well. And this is going to be a treatment that we will now be able to provide to other residents in other neighborhoods in the future.
That's fantastic news. I can imagine my constituents lining up to request those. I think I've had requests for raised crosswalks at certain places. So I'll go back through our neighborhood groups and in our request log and see where those were. And congratulations also to Dilworth. Thank you for acknowledging Dilworth Elementary. It's a magnet school, but it's in my district and I have neighbors that walk there. And I really want to encourage Domi to do more around the safe routes to schools. Mostly in my district, I've been trying to highlight where not only the schools, but the school bus stops are. We had an example that I cite very often when Bigelow Boulevard was under construction some years ago, there was a tremendous amount of aggressive traffic on Haron and Melwood with people trying to find alternate routes, especially in the kind of roadway to Melwood Connector. It was very dangerous and there were school bus stops. And we discovered from PPS that one corner had 16 different school bus stop times in the morning and in the evening. So there were 16 different buses picking up 16 different groups of kids over a two and a half hour span. And so it's really important that we coordinate with PPS to find those bus stops because they change in their routing each year and make sure that we have safe sidewalks and safe street crossings. I would encourage also utility coordination and not permitting the construction projects when we have schools starting. I know a bus stop near me had almost every sidewalk removed. Negley Avenue because of gas line replacements. And so you don't want to drive small elementary school kids to cross Negley and back again because their sidewalk is closed and they're trying to get to their school bus, you know, during rush hour in the morning. So that was just a kind of learning lesson, I think. I don't know if you want to speak to that. I can't see while I'm speaking the way this Zoom is set up, so I can't see your reaction, so I'll just.
We're masked as well, so our reactions are masked, but we couldn't agree more. We are not, you know, this is our second year of Safe Routes to School. Our first year of the Safe Routes to School program was a year that most kids didn't actually go to a physical building. And so while building this program, we were still able to work with schools and identify infrastructure improvements that we're working through the PENDOT process on because we do have PENDOT funding for that. But we've also done other programmatic improvements, as you saw with the Golden Sneaker Award. We're right now developing a draft map to assist those students at schools where their school bus service has been cut. We have worked with the school administrators to identify the best routes, the best infrastructure and facilities for students to be able to get where they need to go, especially in these unprecedented times. In terms of utility coordination, you're absolutely right. We are right now operating with, I believe, one traffic permit reviewer as we have another person who is unfortunately dealing with some health issues. And we need more, you know, we're doing what we can. We leverage external resources to improve our reviews, especially for complex reviews. But we're, we could do more with more. We also have, I believe, nine inspectors for the city. We look at the permits, licenses and inspections department. They've got, I believe, over 40. And so we've got only nine individuals who are dedicated to making sure that not only we're not, you know, provided that we're issuing permits correctly and we're looking for those major issues of multiple utility cuts or obstructions in the same intersection and high knee locations. Being able to actually go up and follow up on those permits to make sure that they're being adhered to and that all of the different actors in our public space are in compliance with our permits is another, is another struggle for us. You know, we've increased, we're at 50,000 inspections we performed this year and that's a larger number than last year. But we are looking for ways to get more efficient and to do more in that regard. So I couldn't agree more about striving to be better about where we're allowing work and also making sure that what has been allowed is what's actually being performed.
Now, if other members don't appreciate the importance of those inspectors, imagine having a large construction project along a very busy, high pedestrian and high car roadway like Liberty Avenue in Bloomfield and having the contractor building that large building encroaching over the sidewalk and forcing pedestrians into the busy roadway when they're not permitted to close the sidewalk, having to call Domi and get inspectors out, having them move their fencing back off of the sidewalk. And then when no one's looking, you know, a day later, moving and closing their fencing back over the sidewalk, closing the sidewalk again, having calls from people with visual disabilities and people. and people in wheelchairs living nearby, not being able to safely go through the neighborhood as well as again, just, you know, uncounted numbers of pedestrians and having to go through that for weeks on end. So we really appreciate the Delmy inspectors. I would be in support of increasing the level of inspection and it's a matter truly of safety. So I appreciate that request and I'll put a little star by that in my notes. And I, I wondered before I finish, Madam Chair, I'll try to wrap up here. There's, I think, some debate. And I know that I could hear some reactions from chambers when you were talking about not only the scooters, but also a lot of the technology pilot projects, let's call them. So the sidewalk robots are pedestrians now under state law, unfortunately, in Bloomfield. And there was a lot of contention. Bloomfield's residents did not feel that they had, certainly had not requested sidewalk robots. Didn't feel heard adequately and yet there they are. So it's, I think it's up for discussion how much city residents are comfortable or not with these private technology partnerships. And so if I may, I was looking on the org chart when you had the presentation up and you mentioned that there were some nonprofit maybe or outside partnerships that were grant funded and were not reflected in the city budget. I'm a little concerned about that. Could you put that part of the presentation back up and highlight for me where there were grants, funding activities? And does that overlap with where these tech partnerships are? And is that, is that, let me be frank, is that off book? I'll give you a chance to answer.
Sorry, my tablet is protesting. But I can't speak to that, so. So in terms of our grant supplemented positions, they are overwhelmingly in our policy shop. We have an autonomous vehicle technology manager, Erin Clark, who I think most council members have interacted with because she's fantastic. And unfortunately, her last day with the city, I believe, is in the next couple of weeks. I know we, we lost a really, really great one. But she's funded by the Knight Foundation, so she's not funded by the industry. She's funded by an external organization, philanthropic organization that is focused on supporting cities. So as, as Councilmember Gross, you mentioned that at the state level, personal delivery device robots, I believe up to about 500 or 550 pounds were allowed and enabled and considered pedestrians and up to 12 miles per hour. And so by having a nimble position like an AV policy analyst, we were able to say, you know what, this is happening outside of our control. So let's make the best of this situation and learn and work together with an industry provider, KiwiBot, to test out how something like this might happen in our city because we don't have control over what has been enabled at the state level. So even though I can understand why there would be some concern there and I think it'd be very different if that position was funded by an autonomous vehicle company. But I did want to clarify that it's funded by a philanthropic organization that is here to support cities and not necessarily the industry directly and to help us in situations like the one we're in.
So did city council receive that grant? So if he, you know, if you donate dollars to the city for a function, it still needs to be received formally by city council and be tracked by all of our budget processes so the city, the citizens can have eyes on it.
Yes, it was. And then I don't know if you have anything additional you want to add, but.
I didn't, I don't remember everything, so I just wanted to be sure to ask.
I think in 2019 or 2020, I don't know. It's been on the books for a while though.
Because I, I think I've heard that there is some partnership possibly with the Oakland Innovation District where there's grants being received there and not going through the city.
You're referring to is the Innovate PGH partnership that we have for the Move PGH program. So they were able to, and this predates my joining the department, but I understand that they have partnered with us and accepted some grant funding to help support the city's efforts. And so we do have two individuals that work on the Move PGH team at Innovate PGH that are supporting the city's functions for that program, but they're working on behalf of us. My understanding is that the money that they accepted to hire those individuals was not an option for the city. And so we would have gone without that support. But we are directing the work of those individuals as we are the program that manages. We are the department and the city that owns that public space or the programs within it.
So is that, they're in your org chart or they're in the Innovate? What's it, is it Innovate? You said Innovate, is it Innovate PGH or Innovate something?
Innovate, I believe it's Innovate PGH. It is not reflected in this org chart because they're not staff that sit within our department physically and are supplementing us in that way. It's a much shorter term program. And that is the distinction between the grants that went through city council, like Evan mentioned, with our Knight Foundation AV policy analyst and program support externally, sort of in a consultant capacity.
Okay. And so it's, we have a cooperative agreement, I guess, with Move PG for Move or PGH or Innovate PGH. I have to admit, I cannot keep all the PGH acronym things.
It's hard.
So we have, well, I guess I'll look. We want to make sure that, we were having this discussion yesterday. And with this, Madam Chair, I'll wrap up. That we want to make sure that all of the cooperative agreements are also, as required by law, publicly available, posted on the city controller's website and been approved and authorized by city council and all that kind of thing. So I'll just, I'll follow up and try to do my homework after the, after this budget hearing. Thank you. And that's, that's all I have. Madam Chair, thank you. Thank you, everyone at Delmy.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And because you couldn't see, the reaction you were getting from those in chambers was enthusiastic nodding to a lot of what you were saying. So we have Councilman Coghill back joining us and wanted to turn it over to him for some questions and remarks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm glad I made it back, you know, I didn't want to run out so hastily. But when I heard there was two grosses at the table, I just freaked out. All good fun, of course. So, yeah, I guess I wanted to touch on a few things. You know, the, you know, what the biggest difference I noticed between the city of Pittsburgh and the boroughs surrounding it are sidewalks. Now, I know the city of Pittsburgh, we are required to maintain and take care of our own sidewalks. I would love to see that come back in our hands someday because the truth of the matter is, you know, when people are looking at, you know, thousands of dollars to pay a contractor to come in and replace a sidewalk, they just, they don't do it, you know, they'll throw their makeshift, some do it, but you know, for the most part, I would love to take, what, what would that look like?
There's a number of things that that would take. I see that Eric, who oversees our critical sidewalk gap program, has a lot of knowledge on it, but some of the first things are the legislative hurdles. This year, I believe it was 2021 that, thank you, council passed a recommendation that the department made where we tweaked language about sidewalk maintenance. It went from shall find the property owner when we go in as a department and city and invest in improving sidewalks to may find the property owner. That took down a barrier to us being able to make those sidewalk improvements today by not having to penalize property owners, especially in our most under-resourced communities. I think it's something that we are interested in and of course would take money to not only construct sidewalks and maintain them. I think one of the larger questions has to do with potential liability. You know, we've talked a lot about paving and our ability to maintain our thousand plus miles of roadway today. Think about adding sidewalks to that. And would we be able to be out everywhere we need to be exactly when a tree root bumps up a sidewalk, for example? And so I think that there are some questions in place that surround that, but it's something that I've personally had a lot of interest in seeing done and had our equitable mobility policy analysts perform research on, hence the code change. And then I'll pass to our chief engineer, Eric Setzler, who actually builds sidewalks.
Thank you. No, I think, you know, from our point of view, building sidewalks is something we're good at. We know how to do that. We would love to do it. We have been doing it. We have started the Critical Sidewalk Gap Program to go in, particularly in areas where there is no realistic hope of the adjacent parcels maintaining the sidewalk. I mean, honestly, some of them may actually be owned by the city or they're vacant. And, you know, the need is there, that, that we, we can't just fall back and say, well, it's, it's their job. Like, we have to do it because we believe in mobility and we believe in getting people where they need to go. You know, it's also could be much more efficient for us to go in and tackle a block versus attempting to get five, 10, 15 different people to hire different contractors to do the work. So it would really help with the goals that Delmy believes in to do this on a larger scale. But of course, as the director mentioned, a lot of it comes down to money. And it is a liability and it is a funding need.
Yep. Well said, Eric. And, you know, besides the safety issue as to ADA accessible and people able to, you know, just travel on our sidewalks aesthetically, you know, it's horrible. I can't stand to see it, you know? And again, when I go through Brentwood and other surrounding boroughs who do take care of them, you know, it's the first thing I notice. A lot easier for them to do it, I know. Because like, as you said, it's going to be a huge expense for us to take such a thing on. But I would love to see it move towards that in the future. And as you said, Eric, I think it's a lot harder to coordinate and cite people and say, you know, you have to get a contractor and you're liable for, you know, a lawsuit of, you know, it, it just seems like it's less work for us to try to find the money someday than to try to deal with the property owners and try to get them to get their sidewalk up to code. Plus it would make our city a heck of a lot more attractive, I believe. And, you know, more desirable to move to, you know? I think, you know, that's a major thing. I see curbs, you know, hanging, I wires or rods, steel rods sticking out of them. And for us to lean on the property owners, you know, I doubt that's very successful. But, um, yeah, I would love to see that in our hands. Again, I know it takes money and we could talk about that moving forward. So, so, okay, I just wanted to state that. The other thing was alleys, okay? Working with Chief Gilman in the past four years, kind of happened by accident in some of my neighborhoods, Brookline, Character area. Almost 90% of them have an alley behind their house and they use it to park. They have a driveway back there, what have you, you know? So we just, you know, I took on a few, you know, they weren't always the first things on my radar. It was always the main streets, of course. But, but after doing a few and the reaction I got back from the people who live on that block, I mean, you know, they feel we personally say paved their driveway, which for, for a couple of reasons here. Number one, when we pave an alley, the lifetime of it, you know, has got to be triple, maybe quadruple what we get out of a street because of the amount of traffic on it, I would think. So I feel like we get a lot more bang for our buck when we do alleys. So, so I'm on a drive to try to get all the alleys paved because it's really the first street they come in on and the last street that they come in, come off of. So, so, you know, I feel people really appreciate it. Of course, I don't want to neglect the main streets, but I would like an initiative to really drive home paving the alleys because most of them are in horrible shape. And the, and I had one paved probably 10 years ago. I didn't have it paved, but I, I, there's somebody that got it paved. Still perfect, you know, so makes it easier to plow, you know? So, so if you want to comment on that, you can. I'm just stating it really as a, something I believe.
I could comment briefly. I agree. I think that's great. You know, certainly there's the balancing act in, in developing the paving program. We have to invest in the main streets. You can't ignore them. But you need to get, you know, pick some from bucket A, bucket B, bucket C, and make sure that we're making progress on all categories of streets. They do last for a long time. Once you can tackle it, so that it is a good return on investment, if you will. We do get, we've had challenges. I'm sure there's been some in your districts and others as well where alleys were never built with proper water drainage infrastructure. And actually you go in and you pave the alley and all of a sudden, you know, you have runoff issues and, and, and you get some, some, some concerns there. So we have to be very careful. We have discussed the idea of also having a green alley program where you would go beyond it and then, you know, maybe do some water retention or other things within the alley. You know, that makes it a, a bigger project to tackle, of course, it needs more money, but could have multiple benefits, both in stormwater reduction and in providing a good paved surface. So it's been something that's been tossed around, but I think it's something that's worth continuing to look into as we go into the future.
I agree. And, you know, we have some really great people like John, I can't think of his last name. Klinger, yeah. He's like a guru in this stuff, you know? He comes out, he said, we'll just make it higher over here and lower over there. And, oh, and looking at the water runoff, you know, which has been very effective, you know? It's so many times, it's the way you pave it. And I'm in the water business kind of myself, so I understand that. And he's done some really remarkable things just by coming out and, you know, just analyzing the situation and deciding, you know, where we build up the street, where we make it lower and where we make it higher. And one, I'm sorry, did you want to say?
I just wanted to add real quick, since you mentioned John Klinger and his paving team, of which many of them are named John, almost exclusively. And Eric's mentioning that without naming ages, they're, they're all approaching retirement age. And it's almost a favor at this point that they are continuing on with the city. They love their jobs. They love the people they work with and we want them here as long as possible. But they've told us that that timeline is very, very short, two years maximum. And so as we continue to work with council over the next two years and we talk about this, this great need, we're going to have to talk about transition and attrition and how we staff up now so that we can get people to learn under the folks who have been here for decades so that we're not starting with a totally blank slate in two years. I just wanted to raise.
I'm glad you brought that up because I said to John, whatever it takes. I said, we need to get you a raise. I said, what do, what do we have to do? I said, because, you know, that type of knowledge and the knowledge of our streets and the way the water runs on and off of our streets is so valuable. I hate to think, I shudder to think about losing that experience. He's just one and I know you have others, but yeah. So, so whatever we can do to keep him, I think, until we can groom people to come in and do it. Finally, you know, I just wanted to, never wanted to miss the opportunity to plug something I'm trying to sell. You know, I know that Councilwoman Strasburger was here earlier. I don't know if Councilwoman Gross or anybody else is online with us, but would you just speak to the policy position that I'm putting in for and as to how you can use that and why we need it?
Policy is another one of those unsung heroes, you know? It's something that people don't think about and they don't think about the tangible impacts on our work. You heard me mention a few minutes ago about changes to the language in the code regarding sidewalk construction. A work product we could not do without technically being required by code to fine and penalize property owners was a policy change. Encroachments, this year we also, you might have heard me mention, changed minor and major encroachments so that if you're trying to beautify the space outside of your business or home with something as small as a planter, you now have a much faster process to go to that frees up council member time. It frees up the public's time. We can't do any of that work without somebody who's focused on looking at our code for those opportunities. Someone that has the understanding, not only of the work that our department is performing, but the work that our department wants to perform and breaking down that legislative barrier to getting that stuff done. So not only is it core function work like sidewalks, but it's also when things like delivery robots are kind of dropped in our city, making sure we have someone who can engage the industry, engage the nation and other cities and also engage our, our public so that we're doing the best that we can.
So let it be known for the record that our, our director here really needs a policy analyst and that's what we're putting in for. So I just didn't want to miss the opportunity while I have you here, you know? It's one thing for me to try to, you know, lobby with the council members, but it's another thing hearing from you. So I, I thank you for that. One last question. I saw, Nick, I saw you on the news with the fire trucks getting around the roundabouts. Have we come to a consensus? Have we solved that? What's the?
We have not re-engaged with our friends at the Fire Bureau quite yet, but we will, we would be remiss not to remind them that we went on training runs with them where we demonstrated they are, they are designed based on experience in other cities to be driven in front of the roundabout because the turning radius around the roundabout does not work. In practice, we know that they do this. We know that they have figured out how to get around them. We would love the opportunity in the future to discuss those matters with them internally before it reached that level. But the, every single intersection where we have put a traffic circle can functionally be used by all of our emergency service providers.
Oh, well, that's good to hear, Nick. I hope you can, I'll come to a consensus there. And, you know, going back to the speed humps, you know, again. Oh, well, that's good to hear, Nick. I hope you can, um, I'll come to a consensus there. And, you know, going back to the speed humps, you know, um, again, used to be, I would get screamed at if we talked about speed humps. Now they're begging me for them. So, um, you know, I'd like to see much more investment in that, but those two, I've heard from the firefighters who I'm very close talks with and all the time. And I know you've been talking to them. But, you know, even for them, I mean, of course, when they're on the way to an emergency, seconds are a matter of everything. And it's not possible for them to fly over them because then hoses jump off, you know, the, the, the truck probably takes damage. So, so they do have to, I, I didn't take that in consideration. I could tell you when I'm looking for speed humps on certain avenues and, and streets. Uh, but have you had talks with them about the speed humps? Have they had, uh, concerns about that?
Yeah. Um, emergency service providers.
Yes.
Uh, well, I'm sorry, EMS, um, uh, quite frankly, more than fire. Uh, we made a number of alterations to our program this year alone to address that. Uh, your project in, in your district Pioneer is a great example. Uh, on Pioneer, uh, we did not construct speed humps. We constructed speed tables. They are larger features with more gradual slopes, uh, that can be driven at a faster speed and have less impact to those vehicles. We've also begun on those sort of priority routes, um, being more targeted with how we place our speed humps. Typically on a neighborhood street, we would place them every three to 500 feet in succession. Get a nice rolling effect of a lower, of lower speed on Pioneer, uh, and Councilperson Gross, uh, this will be, uh, how we tackle Stanton Avenue, which was delayed this year because of these, uh, coordination efforts with fire and EMS, uh, that they will be using a targeted manner. So, uh, on Pioneer, we placed one. Uh, Moore Park was the biggest pedestrian generator, uh, on the, in their study area. Uh, we know that's where we had the most complaints, the most, uh, potential for damage. And so we placed them such that it would control speeds heading into and out of that zone. On Stanton, we'll plan to do that in the Sunnyside School area. Uh, the Stanton Avenue project is about a mile long. What putting, putting a speed hump every, even a speed table every three, three to 500 feet on a street like that is just infeasible. Uh, and so we will be using them in the areas of greatest need so that they do not result in an overall delay that would put anybody at risk.
Nick, I'm glad you clarified that. The difference between a speed hump and a speed table, uh, you're right. Uh, and I got to tell you, you were at the meeting with me. We must've had close to 70 or 80 people there.
That was our biggest one of the year.
Yeah, right. On Pioneer Avenue. And I got to tell you, they're thrilled. You know, they're, I've got zero complaints. Everybody says they feel safer. Um, you know, as we know, there were cars flipping over into the park on a regular basis there. And, uh, if Councilwoman Gross, if you're.
I'm so enthusiastic. Thank you so much for, for bringing up Stanton Avenue. Sorry to jump in, Councilwoman Coghill, but.
No, I was just going to endorse those for you and let you know that, um, you know, they're, they're thrilled with them. Uh, really, you know, didn't disrupt much as far as traffic flow or anything. And, uh, they're very effective. Speed tables, that's the difference rather than speed, speed bumps. So, um, that's it for me. Did I mention that we need a policy analyst to the other council members? So, so, uh, back to you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilwoman Gross, did you have anything to add before I made some, uh, remarks and some questions?
Uh, no, thank you, but I really do appreciate, um, Domi bringing up the, the Stanton Avenue request. We do have other requests. I won't go through them all. Um, but we really appreciate that they're making progress on each of these and, and, uh, that we've, we've seen a lot of these kinds of traffic calming implementations throughout my district and they're very well received. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So I'll just, I have a few things here. First, um, some congratulations. Um, congratulations on all your accomplishments this year, particularly which jumped out to me is the minor encroachment legislation that you just mentioned. You know, that's the need for a policy analyst, um, to remain and maybe an additional one. And, uh, thanks also to Hershmarinstein and my chief of staff, Emily Yonan, for their collaborative work with you on that. Amazing work during the kind of lockdown worst of the pandemic, um, helping people get outside and recreate outside safely. Um, where they could be able to, you know, have human contact outside of a Zoom screen. Um, helping restaurants and businesses survive, um, by creating, you know, new temporary rules around streeteries and now looking at how we can make some of those permanent. There's nothing like, um, uh, you know, necessity, necessity is the mother of invention, right? We, people who once um, balked at the proposition of, um, uh, taking away a single parking spot or maybe two parking spots for outdoor seating are now accepting it because it's there and it's, they've managed to find other places to park. So, um, MovePGH is huge. I know that we're the first, I think in the world to have a program like this with such an integrated system of buses and, you know, um, last mile, um, transportation and it's all just integrated into one seamless or app and ability to do that. And then your focus on customer service and, uh, we had the same conversation with Director Kinter at PLI, uh, for a contractor training for customer service and increasing their ability to deliver really great customer service. I know if, if among your customers are, are us as council members, we so appreciate the ability to just have a clear, a clear understanding of what is feasible, right? I think, you know, I'm speaking for myself, maybe not everyone. I'm willing to wait if I know that there is a reason for why you can't necessarily either meet on site right now because we're in the midst of construction season, but we can meet later in two months, or why we can't do this right now because we have X, Y, and Z happening around the city. But we can be realistic about it, not over promise and do it next quarter or two quarters from now, right? Like just having that level of expectation is so helpful because then we can go back to our constituents and give them the reasons why. Not just, no, we can't do that, or yes, we can do that and then delay, delay, delay. Actually having that, that explanation is, is incredibly helpful. Um, for us to deliver a great customer service. So thanks for, um, for highlighting that. Two, um, a couple of things that Councilman Coghill said on the sidewalks, you know, this is where I want to tie it. Sorry, I'll let you respond if there's any of that that you wanted to kind of elaborate on. We've already talked a lot today, so I didn't want to. The, the sidewalks, I tie that directly to this, um, this, this idea of, um, I guess vacant lots and higher density, right? If we, we only are a city of 300,000 with roadways, as Councilwoman Gross sort of alluded to, for many more, for up to 600,000. And are we going to get back up to 600,000? I don't know. There'd be a lot of cars on the street, right? So that's why we have to continue to think about this other, um, these other modes of transportation and really pushing those. But also, we also should have kind of in the back of our minds, what we would like to do if we were to have the tax revenue of 600,000 residents. If we were able to convert vacant lots into then housable, um, you know, um, residences for people who are paying taxes on that property. If we had, you know, denser commercial districts where people could live in higher buildings over, um, uh, over storefronts and restaurants, um, you know, that's, it's tax revenue coming in. So, you know, one thing I would love to talk about, if we were to get to that point and have the money, you know, maybe we could get it from an outside source for year one, from a grant or from something else, but ultimately it's going to have to come from our own tax base and that would be sidewalks, right? For that exact reason, it would be just a huge improvement and probably more cost efficient in a lot of ways too, and more equitable. And then alleys, um, I, I love the idea of, you know, an alleyway being, um, able to, uh, uh, well, to last longer, to have a longer life after paving. But also I'm sure that some of those that were paved in years, certainly when mine are paved, they become play streets. You know, they put a basketball hoop up or, you know, that's where they're playing hockey or whatever. It's just a safer place to play. So I know there are some cities out there, Melbourne, Australia is one of them where every, every alleyway is exciting. There's either a mural, there's a karaoke bar, there's some in the center of the city, there's something cool in every single alleyway and they really highlight their alleyways. We have so many alleys downtown. We're starting to do that with Strawberry Way, but, you know, I think this is a really good opportunity for us as we reach the end of paving season. And they're sort of, okay, what are our priorities at the end of paving season? Because of co-ops, because of some extra money we're able to find. You know, there's always that little bit of money that we're able to find for alleys. Like let's pave our alleys with that because it's not expected and, you know, we can just get a few here and there every year. I don't know. Any thoughts or response or? Okay, um, I'll keep going. Okay. Just wanted to get it out on the table where we have everyone. Um, this is like a great, you know, meeting of the minds and budget season. When it comes to, here's an actual question. Um, when it comes to the different priorities, I mean, I saw, I wrote down three, we have three quarter improvements and plans for next year, two traffic calming per, uh, projects per district, three intersections, um, two of which I think are in the district I represent. Um, because I really requested that, six paintballer projects, you know, that's, that's a lot. It's a lot for what we have. I mean, people don't realize how much cost and how much energy goes into, say, an intersection upgrade. I mean, it's like upwards of like $500,000 for just replacing an intersection light, uh, traffic signals. But it's, it's, it's also not where we need to be based on the requests, right? Like when we think of the traffic calming requests we have or the, um, quarter improvement requests, they far outpace our ability to keep up. And I think I've talked to Nick about this, like, and I think I've talked to, you know, AD Lucas as well. We have so many projects that we've kind of put up, put, put in and installed in it kind of a temporary basis with flex posts that have the potential to be maybe assessed, some data taken, um, and then like reassessed and then maybe made more permanent with some funding for planter, planted ballers or just made more beautiful than these flex posts all over the place. And, you know, South Dallas is an example. People are sort of saying, when are we going to try to make this more permanent? And is it working? Should we try to fix it, this and that in it? You know, so are there, how are you thinking about sort of, I would say, the breadth of what we want to do across the city versus the depth of like going in on more funding for each individual project? Would you say like, is there a goal around having a project only sit in temporary status for a couple of years, well, before going back and then redoing it the, the more permanent way?
I'll, I'll start and then I'll let Nick chime in because a lot of what you just described comes out of his shop. Um, so again, with policy and with everything else, we're, we're trying to add strategy to our work, you know? And equity is the foundation for that strategy. So by identifying communities based on need, looking at, you know, who has had recent investment, who has the most crashes, having documents, I neglected to mention, but this year we published our long awaited pedestrian safety action plan that actually took a look at data, worked with the Federal Highway Administration and identified where those locations are prioritized. So it's a combination of knowing where you need to go in an equitable way. And then, you know, if you're having to choose between five, uh, paint and baller projects or one substantial concrete project, that's a hard decision, you know, that, that again, that's a community decision, that's an engagement with elected representatives on that. Um, and the foundation for making that decision will be continued come from evaluation. You know, if paint and baller works and it is working in many locations, then it would be hard to say that we shouldn't do more of that to get more projects out there and improve safety if we can demonstrate that it is working. But we do have a goal in here to convert some of those high priority locations that are working into even better locations with more infrastructure. But I will pass to Nick if he has anything else to add.
Sure. So, uh, I've been in Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh since 2009, uh, and just started working for the city this year. Being in the, in the industry, I followed along with the process that Domi has created here. Uh, I was very excited to come on board. One of the first things though, uh, that I tried to tackle out of the Traffic Bureau was this conversation that we're having right now. Um, Peyton Ballard as materials have a finite lifespan. There's a certain design life that any material is going to have. Um, I like to tell people, city's been around for 200 some years. I plan for it to be around for that many in the future. That's a lot of paint and a lot of ballers that you're going to have to do, even if they're working well. Uh, so to that end, the $500,000 line item that council has provided for us next year is speaking specifically to that process of not only getting more of these interventions out there to keep more people safe, but our ability to go back to that 2017 and 2018 period where we started some of these projects. That's already getting towards that five-year lifespan, right? And so starting first and foremost with that longevity piece, what is state of good repair? Which ones have been the most successful and in thereby move forward with a more permanent installation? That is going to be the basis of our evaluation. That being said, we very much do all of our work, uh, in response to our residents. Uh, and so, um, there's a lot of gray area when we put any sort of, uh, process or policy together. We want to be sure that that process and policy is responsive to the needs of our residents. If you folks have ideas, if your residents have ideas, we're certainly going to be open and receptive to spot requests or where we can maybe thin out or remove some of those flex posts and put in more permanent installations.
Hmm. I'm sure it helps if we can come with some alternate source of funding or support or others for green infrastructure that's built into it or whatever it might be. It reminds me of the Innovation Performance Tech Refresh Program where no, you know, um, device is going to be more than two or three years old that we all have. You know, it's kind of like that. Like if we can start to, for the end of the lifespan of the flex post or whatever, the paint and ballard, we can start to refresh it and, you know, while we're getting, while we're expanding the amount that we have across the city. So.
I'd just want to quick that this is a good time to highlight the collaboration with the Department of Public Works. So one of the examples, because they have the construction crews in-house to do concrete work. So Eric, I don't know if you want to touch on a little bit of what we've done this year and also what we think we can do more of by collaborating closely with that department.
Sure. Yeah, we've had, I would say, great success this past year, um, working with Public Works, working with the Construction Division, Tom Samsteg. Some of our smaller projects, the Hatfield Connector up in Lawrenceville, um, we put in a bus, uh, a bus waiting platform up, uh, Biggs and Glen Rose Street up, uh, in Fineview where a bus stop had been removed and it couldn't be put back because there was no safe place to stand. Those kind of projects are just a lot of legwork and a lot of cost to get a contractor on board to do those kinds of things. But we've been very successful in both of those and others collaborating with Public Works where, you know, we have a capital budget, we can buy the material, they can provide the labor to go out and do it. And it's been, it's so much cheaper, you know? It could easily be, you know, five to 10 times cheaper to do it with in-house crews. So that's something that we want to, you know, continue and improve that collaboration. And, you know, I'll even throw in a plug that building up that construction division helps everybody. It helps DPW and it helps Domi. So, uh, good opportunities there.
Great. I love, I love hearing the ability to bring as much in-house as well, um, as possible. I was, I was happy to hear, well, again, congrats on the, on the elevated crosswalk and I'd love to see more of those. And I was happy to hear Councilwoman Gross really highlight the safe um, routes to school in addition to your highlighting of that. And especially, uh, you answered some questions I had, you know, are we taking into consideration, specific consideration? Those areas where bus stops have been eliminated. Um, this is a great, uh, collaboration with ours, with PPS and our schools, right? And, and that you're creating a map because that was something that was brought to my attention actually, um, because of great satisfaction with, I think maybe the second city raised crosswalk, which is connecting Whitman School to Whitman Park, uh, you know, a children's center to the park. That's, you know, that's on Solway Street and now is an elevated crosswalk as well. And it strikes me that if we're going to be, you know, um, if we're going to be prioritizing this kind of infrastructure, it really makes sense to put it in the walk sheds and these routes on the way to school. Someone said, you know, uh, great, I sent my kid to, you know, Carriage House, the Whitman School. Um, this is wonderful. My other kid goes to Colfax or bus stop was eliminated. We're now walking. How can we get elevated crosswalks or whatever tool is right for that walk and for all kids who are walking to Colfax now? And it just makes complete sense to me. And if people, like this constituent who I think is almost like a traffic engineer in his spare time, because he just enjoys this stuff so much, is, is, um, can see it and visualize and say, great, like this is the map of the walk shed of the walk to school route. And I'm going to join my local bike ped committee and I'm going to help advocate for something year after year after year to make sure that we're get, making progress on these routes, you know, it might not be all in year one or year two, but as we can make progress, I think that could really help build some ownership over that with, um, with residents. So are you planning to make that map public? Is it already public and I just haven't seen it?
So the maps are school specific. So we're working with individual schools and I believe Pittsburgh Faison may be our first school that we've been working with. Um, because we want to get it right. We want to make sure that it's kid friendly. This is something that a child, an elementary or middle school child should be able to read. Um, we're piloting because the community school administration was able to work with community locations to identify safe spots too, you know, in some communities. A child may hear a gunshot on their walk to school. They may encounter another safety issue of that nature. And so we want to be sensitive to that and make sure that if we're telling kids that this is the safest route from an infrastructure standpoint, that we also can highlight places that they can go to that have agreement with the school community as a safe space too. And so it's something that we're piloting this year. There were, I believe, 12 schools initially that lost their bus service. And so those were our first schools that we're engaging with for this sort of encouragement. I'll highlight that one of the budget requests that Evan can correct me if I'm wrong, that did not get funded this year was a specific line item for safe routes to school construction. You know, we do core services, but having a dedicated line item eventually in the future is a great way to make sure that schools are getting to the front of the line for some of this work because some of our most vulnerable pedestrians and others are full age students, of course.
Yeah, I would say schools and parks, right? That's where we have vulnerable people. But I mean, I'm sure that's not the only consideration, but that's what jumps out to me. And at the same time, as much as, you know, I know we're responsive to, you're responsive to us and, and by virtue of that responsive to constituents, there's also obviously education that has to go into how we spend our money and. And I'm a big believer in just observing how things work over the last eight years in city government. That, you know, I'm a huge proponent, proponent for the, if we're talking about the three-legged stool of engineering as, as one of the ways we can control speed and, you know, dangerous driving and, you know, really make sure that we're calming our streets as much as possible and, and helping all modes of transportation and all people stay safe. That said, I think we've put so much pressure on that stool. It's like breaking. It's like not keeping up with the amount that we have to educate people and also enforce, right? Enforce our laws. And I realize that to be able to get speed cameras, we need the state legislative approval, right? To even get radar for speeding, we have to get state legislative approval still. And red light cameras, I think it's a gray area in my mind. I think we had the authority, missed the window and maybe we have to seek approval again. But all three of those things in my mind would be tremendous benefits to us when it comes to supporting the work that we have. Maybe we wouldn't need as much money spent on traffic calming devices and speed humps if we have the ability to enforce more efficiently. And ideally without human intervention with cameras, with fair, you know, kind of fair judgments in the courtroom when it comes to fees and fines. So we're not putting people in jail over, you know, unpaid fees for speeding, but we are curtailing that citywide because it was a 1A story a couple of weeks ago that talked about the rising rates of unsafe driving nationwide. I think a lot of people tend to think it's their street or it's their block or it's, it's just the city of Pittsburgh. Why are people crazy? The city of Pittsburgh driving, it's nationwide. I mean, it's really gotten to be an epidemic of its own. So, you know, I just wanted to state that too. Maybe we wouldn't have so many traffic calming requests that we can't keep up with if we were able to just enforce a little bit better at the most dangerous places. Absolutely.
I have to also add that it is taking a fair amount of humility to understand just what we can actually control. As engineers, we like to think that we have, you know, always an ability to solve the problem. And quite frankly, a lot of our residents think that there's always got to be something you can do to make that person stop at a stop sign, to make that person slow down. I can throw a speed hump on every block, but I don't know if that's also a result that our residents are going to ultimately want as well. There, there has to be an unfortunate expectation set that there is only so much control we have at this stage with the quality of driving that we are seeing. I'll also use that as an opportunity to plug the fact that we have seen a reduction in crashes and fatalities at a time where overall we saw about a 20% increase in fatalities last year. And I believe I just read this morning that we are already in 2021, about 18% ahead of where we were at this point in 2022, or sorry, in 2020 in fatalities nationwide. So we are seeing tangible evidence that our programs are resulting in safer streets. However, we very much do need our partners in both enforcement and education to help us out and get to that last piece because we won't be able to do it all within Domi.
Mm hmm. Yeah. This is where, you know, we need enforcement, maybe we need to hire sociologists, maybe Councilwoman Gross knows the sociologists we can hire on the city or someone who can work in human behavior and really convince people because, you know, I put up that bumper sticker, I drive slow, drive smart on my car. I think it was the only one in the city who had that. So, you know, we have to figure out a way to get the education piece. Drive safe in your own block for starters and then go from there.
Sorry, if I could just also add to that is there's not, there's all, there's the moving enforcement that we need, but there's also parking enforcement, which doesn't immediately sound like a safety issue. But when we're talking about curbside management and parking enforcement, we don't want vehicles parked right next to the stop sign. That means you can't see around that car into the intersection for pedestrians or people using any mode. We don't want double parked vehicles. By making sure that our loading zones and our curbs are kept clear when they need to be clear, we can get the truck to the curb and then now we don't have a truck blocking a travel lane that has, again, causing unsafe behaviors. So I think that even as soon as next week with our Automotus Pilot Language Request for Smart Loading Zones, that's going to come to council for review, you're going to see some ideas for how we can have our curb space work better to in turn have safety improvements for our travel lanes and our intersection as well.
That's great. That's great. That's wonderful. A last thing, and I promise I'm done. I, I too would be in, in favor of getting more inspectors because we see the same thing at PWUSA. You know, we have to spot check where, the contractors and subcontractors have to know that they're being spot checked for a great service. And, you know, I know it's everything from, are they doing the job that they said they were going to do at every phase, you know, quality control? But are they also following, just being good neighbors, right? Are they, are they putting their detour signs in places that don't permanently block the sidewalk, which I know I was emailing you all about? Are there ways that they can reposition their signs so it's not causing an undue trip hazard when, or put sandbags at a certain place so that, you know, or a cone in front so that someone, you know, walking down the street at night doesn't trip over the, the detour sign? Or is there, you know, are they closing, as Councilwoman Gross said, closing sidewalks altogether? You know, are they just sweeping the sand that they're putting on in a parking space off the sidewalk so that you push in a stroller? Not that I'm talking from personal experience, you know, sweeping the sand off. There's not an amount of sand in the middle of the sidewalk, like just being a good neighbor, that kind, that kind of thing too. So, you know, I would, I would even take it so far as to say that I would be interested in finding out who are, from our inspections, who's doing it right and who's not when it comes to approving contracts and future procurement? Because we have to be rewarding those with big contracts, those who are doing it right and penalizing those who aren't. I just, that's, that's the way it's going to have to be. And probably other ways I'm sure you've thought of as well. But be happy to continue that conversation. Anyway, if you asked for an additional inspector, at least in the 2023 budget or, you know, if we have the ability to in the 2022 budget, I would be, I would be more than happy to support that. So. Anything else for the good of the order from other council members?
I will be super quick, I promise you. But, you know, as I sit in, you know, other things arise. First, I want to say, Director, to your point, when somebody parks too close to a stop sign or too close to an intersection, there's nothing more dangerous than that for whether you're a vehicle pulling out or whether you're a pedestrian trying to cross, that blind spot is where boom, people, they don't see it coming and neither does the driver. So, you know, that needs, I guess we need to work with our, our police to make sure that we enforce that, you know, more strict. The other thing was like Councilwoman Strasburger, I have a retired constituent, practicing engineer, I think, that, you know, has his own ideas and, and, you know, and he brought this up to me and I just want to run it by you. He keeps saying, Anthony, I've got the perfect legislation for you. I said, what is it? He said, how about, and I like to speak tables rather than the speed bumps. But he said, why don't we put speed tables in front of every park and every school? Maybe we do do that. I don't know. But, you know, I just wanted to get your thoughts on that. Is it feasible? Is it something that we've thought about? And in the way of legislation, maybe we'll do if you think it's a good idea. So rather than make the legislation, I wanted to hear your thoughts.
I know my municipal traffic engineer is chomping at the bit. I can feel it from behind me. I'll just start by saying that when we're adding that strategy and equitability and equity to our processes of where we dedicate resources, looking at land use is part of that equation, you know, do we want to put it next to a place that has a lot of children and elderly people? Yes, that's what we want to do. And so we can build in, into our equity matrix, those sorts of trip generators because we know that that's where it's needed the most for our most vulnerable populations.
Thank you, Director. So first and foremost, absolutely. Right now, early, what I would call early in our neighborhood traffic calling program, it's been demand responsive. We wanted to put the power in the communities to request and tell us where these things are needed the most. As those requests grew, exceeded our funding capacity, we've had to put in a process of prioritization. A way that we found to emphasize projects that were in those exact type of locations where within our five criteria that we evaluate, two of them are directly related to pedestrian trip generators, for which we include parks and schools as our two top, top features in those. So in a roundabout way, we figured out a way to figure, to make the prioritization system focused directly on those areas. In the future, eventually, if and when we got through the more responding to the requests themselves, we very much, very much want to get to a point where we are being proactive with where we plan those things. And those two, two facilities, community centers, schools, playgrounds, parks, those are always going to be the features that we, that we target.
That's great, Nick. And I don't by any means want to be the poster child for speed tables. Not that it's a bad thing either, but I'm just saying, you know, you know, so it sounds like you kind of take that all in consideration. Schools and parks are always at the top of the list and besides, you know, constituent complaints. So, so it sounds like you're working towards that. I don't know if the legislation is necessary. Maybe when we get the money to be able to afford speed humps in every location or speed tables in every location, we could talk about it then. But, but that's it for me. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And thanks for relinquishing the chair to me. I will, I will finish up by saying, just once again, thank you, to thank you to the 100 people on your staff for the work that you do that affects our lives on a daily basis. So, so, so impactfully. And with that, I will make a few meeting announcements. We will go into recess for now, but on Monday, the 13th, we have, at 10:00 AM, we have a public hearing on tax, budget and citizen participation. And that day at 1:30 PM, a line item vote on the 2022 budget. We're nearly done with this process. With that, I am happy to call for a recess. Thank you all.